And we're on to item seven D, is that right? Seventy, request a look at designation, historic landmarks. Who's got this one, Katie?
Laura Turway.
Mr. Ray, go ahead.
Hello, Laura.
Thank you. We'll begin with our city attorney, Bill Kapaisman.
A quick reminder, I know that you have gotten a significant amount of new material over the last day or two, and I want to make sure we focus on what we're, what this is about tonight. You'll notice that this is not listed under section six of the meeting at the public hearing, but seven is general business. This is not a public hearing on the merits of whether or not this is historic. That decision, to the extent one would be made, would be made first by the Historic Review Board. It's also not a question of what happened back in 2004, was something designated or not. Instead, the question before the commission tonight is, what do you want, what do you want to do with these buildings? You know, the, the status is that several years ago, a application was made for the designation of these properties. The city manager refused to consent as allowed by state law. That was, that decision was challenged up to the court of, up to Lubin, the Court of Appeals, and upheld. So we have a, you know, the city at this point is not, has refused to consent to the designation. And I want to read to you from the statute, ORUS 197722, about what that means. That such refusal to consent shall remove the property from any form of consideration for historic property designation. Any form of consideration. So the options that Ms. Turway will, will go over a little more depth in a minute are, we've got a refusal to consent, we could just continue to rely on that and take no further action. We could, this commission could reaffirm, no, we don't want to have the historic designation at this time. Or say, no, this is worth exploring at this time. Although we're not going to talk about the merits, since those issues are, were raised, Ms. Turway does have some information prepared if you want to discuss that further. But I want to stay focused on the question really is about you and your proprietary capacity, and whether or not you're willing to let a designation move forward at this time.
All right. So the city has received a request for local designation of two structures at the Public Works operations site. They're formerly part of Camp Adair. And so the options for the city commission tonight include taking no further action and relying on that previous decision to refuse consent to designate. In other words, the refusal to consent didn't have a timeline associated with it. You were asked, is it okay to go through the process to see if they're eligible and go through local designation? And the city said no, and refused to consent to allow that process to occur. The second option is if the city commission would like to make a formal decision refusing to consent, you could make a new decision to do so. That would trigger 120-day demolition delay, so those structures could not be relocated or removed for 120 days. And the third option is to provide consent for the local designation and instruct staff to schedule the matter before the Historic Review Board. And that would allow the Historic Review Board to look at the merits of the request. Staff is suggesting that you take testimony tonight and provide some tentative direction, and then we'll come back at the November 4th hearing and provide written findings to support that. So how we're gonna, how I'm proposing that we proceed tonight is, one, I will ask you if you would like to accept public comments, and both verbal and written, those that have been proposed to be submitted into the record. And if you accept, we can highlight some of those comments briefly. And then if you would like us to do an overview of the city's position on some of those issues, we're prepared to do that, too. And then we hope to conclude by asking for direction from the city commission on this very specific question that's before you, is what you should do with this local designation. So my first question for you is to ask if you would like to have an open record and accept information that's been added to the record. On the screen before you, you see a list of emails and requests for submittal into the record. So there's a variety of emails from community members. There's this six from Mr. Nacita from yesterday and today. He has also handed us an additional two pages in writing tonight. So I'd also put that on the table if you are willing to accept both written and oral testimony, to include that into the record. So that's the first decision for the commission is if you would like to accept testimony for this, on this.
Mayor Holliday, I have a question for Mr. Kapaisman.
Go ahead.
Mr. Kapaisman, I'm frankly, as a land use professional, I am confused. This is not a public hearing, is my understanding. So I don't understand the distinction between adding information to a record that we don't have, or I understand public comment.
Right.
But we're not, this is not a public hearing, so could you please elaborate? I'm confused by the words, I'm sorry.
Sure, and you know, you're generally right, well, you're absolutely right, this is not a public hearing. You didn't hear the 197763 warnings about all the rest. However, we anticipate that there's a fairly significant chance, significant chance that whatever you do might end up being appealed. And so what we want to do is cabin what you're looking at when you make your decision. And so we're, we're making a record of a decision even though there isn't a public hearing.
So how, how do you appeal something that isn't? Could you explain that?
All kinds of things get appealed, you know, building permits have been appealed, letters from city attorneys have been appealed. We would, you know, to the extent somebody were to attempt, for example, if you were to follow option one and say, we're not going to do anything, we're going to rely on our, the city's previous refusal to consent. I would expect somebody could challenge, could file an appeal. I think we would argue that there was no land use decision made, and I think we'd have a pretty good chance of prevailing there. But, you know, the nature of that process requires some type of record. And just to preserve that, even if it's not a land use decision, they might decide to take it to the rid of review, which also requires a record. And so again, we just want to make clear what it is that, that, you know, we've gotten on this topic.
So as our attorney, what's your recommendation?
Um, I would say one or three, it really is a policy call to you. Do you want to allow, you know, consider whether or not to move forward with the historic designation? You know, certainly that brings some benefits, some detriments. You know, certainly anything you can do with a designated structure, you can do with an undesigned structure. You can preserve it, you can, you know, do other things. If you were to designate it, that would place some limitations, mainly a demolition review, and I'm sure Ms. Turway knows the specifics of what they are. And it provides, you know, some benefits to say, here are these historic structures and, you know, to the community. So it's a policy matter for the commission, do you want to do this or not? To the extent you're comfortable with a current status quo, especially given what else is happening in that area with the idea of sending it designated there as a park. You know, you, you, I would say option one, do nothing. To the extent there may, you believe that there may be merit in the historic designation, and that it's worth exploring, and that you're, you know, willing to accept whatever that, whatever implications that may have to the designation of the park, then option three would seem to be the course.
So let me ask a question. Let's assume that we let this go through and we go through all this process. In the meantime, the commission wants to designate that area as park. If it's designated as a park before the decisions are made, then at that point, if we wanted, still wanted to remove those buildings, would it require a vote?
It would depend on how the designation is written, and, you know, there could be some things where we designate the area as a park, specifically accepting these buildings from the designation as a park. It complicates things, but, you know, I think it could be done. It just, you know, is another complication.
Well, it seems to me that we've beaten this horse to death more times than we can count. I, I'm on the number one train here.
Before you jump to that, I just want to make sure that we're clear on what the record is for this. So if you could answer the question about if...
I think that is the answer to the question.
Just if you would like to accept this evidence into the record.
I think selecting one is the answer to that question.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Mr. Nacita's here, do you want to take testimony from Mr. Nacita?
Well, not testimony.
Comment.
Public comment, maybe, but we're not, it's not a public hearing.
What, what are you pointing at?
One is a solution that's been proposed, and it's...
Are you ready to make that a motion, Commissioner?
Um, Commissioner O'Donnell, I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Commissioner O'Donnell, as many of you are aware, and Mr. O'Donnell's aware, that prior to my being here, I did come and advocate for these designate, this designation. Subject to that, I'm here on the other side now, and I would like to know, I guess, how Commissioner O'Donnell feels about it, because I do not want anything to jeopardize the designation of Waterboard Park. If this does jeopardize that, I can't support it, although I think the buildings could be left alone for now. But, Mr. O'Donnell, sir.
Well, you know, I'm a man of my word, and I said I was fine with this becoming a park, but certain things had to have been accomplished prior to that vote. One was the removal of the armory and a return in good health of the lands on which the armory was situated to the city. Two was the accomplishments that Mr. Conkle, I believe, has accomplished, which are lot line adjustments and therefore. And third was the disposition, removal or destruction of these buildings, and I'll stand by that. So I'm, I'm not going to change my position. And so if your question does, does it jeopardize making it a park? Yes, it does, because I will defer my vote until such time as that's resolved.
I'm going to second Commissioner O'Donnell's motion.
Was it, was it an official, what was his motion exactly?
To go with option one.
The motion is to go with option one.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Mr. Smith?
Is there a reason we can still, that, I don't understand then why we wouldn't still want the correspondence in the record?
Well, because it, everything that came to this point is in the record of the circuit court, right? I mean, not, not any of his new information that showed up at the 11th hour again, but...
That's what I'm talking about.
A significant portion of the material that Mr. Way identified is, you know, the background information about what's going on with historic designation of this property. To the extent the commission is deciding to follow option one and take no action, then, you know, I, I'm not certain there really is a record, and so, you know, we, we've got what we've got. And if someone wants to challenge it, they'll, they can do what they will with it.
Right.
I have no objection to hearing Mr. Nacita, but it depends on the other commissioners. He's here and he's allowed to comment.
Well, I think we've read all his stuff, you know, again...
I have not.
Well, yeah, probably not, because, you know, he dumps, you know, reams of information on us, you know, the day of, and expects us to be able to absorb all that. But the point is, is that we've already been through this process once. We've taken it all the way to the circuit court. Court of Appeals?
Court of Appeals.
Court of Appeals, in one. So what's the point in restarting this thing? If you want to make Barbara apart, you know, I'm going to be with Commissioner O'Donnell on that. I don't want to see anything there that is going to hold us up.
So staff recommends, if you would like to do option one, which is take no further action, relying on the previous decision to refuse consent for designation, that you allow public testimony. We will create a record with that, and then we'll come back with written findings for you at the November 4th City Commission hearing. Also, we have identified for the November 4th hearing, the Waterboard Park designation for this property as well.
I'm confused, now do you concur with that?
Yeah, I do think having, you know, a, coming back on November 4th to finalize it with a, you know, something that says, here's what we're doing, makes sense.
So you're saying we should hear from Mr. Nacita tonight?
You don't have to hear from Mr. Nacita tonight. But, you know, to make a decision, so it's not just a, you know, discussion at, at the commission, but actually, here's what we're doing and why we're doing it, is helpful to the extent someone were to challenge it, to have something where there is, here's what we're doing and why we're doing it, you know, instead of findings, is, would be very helpful in, in that review.
Aren't we saying, here's what we're doing and why we're doing it, because the matter's already been adjudicated?
Yeah.
We would like to have some written findings for you, just in case we go to court, we have a basis for that decision.
And I'm with Commissioner O'Donnell, I don't understand why we need to have written findings for something that's already been adjudicated. We're just saying, we're not gonna, we're relying on the, the court's last decision.
And part of, part of why our reticence about just doing that is that somewhat what we file, what we followed the first, when the application came in in 2017, the city manager made the decision to refuse to consent. There were a number of issues that were raised at a, at a meeting of the Historic Review Board, and Lubin said, well, you haven't resolved these issues. And by putting together a written decision that addresses these things, gives us the ability to go to, you know, if Lubin or the circuit court say something, we can say, here's what the city commission did, and here's why they did it. It just is a safer way of doing it. But, you know, we can certainly, you know, if you're reluctant to do that and want to just make a decision that, or basically make a decision to make no decision, we can do that as well.
I'd like to follow your advice, that's mine.
I'm not sure I understand what the advice is yet.
The advice is to give direction to staff, what course you want to follow, and I believe that was number one. And we come back to the commission next meeting with a written explanation of it.
And at that point, we could take public testimony if we wanted.
I, if you're, if you're going to take public testimony, I'd say take it now.
Or public comment.
Public comment, thank you.
Because we'd like to close the record and then come back with findings.
But there is no record.
Well...
There will be. Can we hear, can we hear the public comment?
It is difficult, because it was, went to Lubin, came back. The commission actually took action and made a decision that said, we are not providing owner consent. You also made a determination that the city manager has the authority to make that as, city manager of the city of Oregon City. So, you know, to the extent that you want to rely on that previous decision, I think, I think we're just trying to be cautious.
What do you want to do?
I, I'm, I agree that we should come back with something written that this commission can vote on.
Okay, so...
Essentially, you know, affirming that, number one.
Number one, I'm okay with that.
Coming back on November 4th to have a full load.
So there's no decision tonight, we'll come back on November 4th, we'll have a full commission.
Yeah.
I'd also support that. I'd like to hear Mr. Nacita's comments, as recommended by Mr. Kapaisman.
Well, to be clear, I said, if you're going to hear public comments, I'd rather have it tonight than November 4th. But you don't have to have it.
I'd rather have it tonight.
You don't?
Stand by what I said.
There, there is a motion and a second on the floor, too.
I do, too.
So...
So we've got a motion on the floor to go with option one. Is there any further discussion?
Does the motion clarify if it's going to expressly reject the request for testimony or accept it?
It's option one as presented.
Is do nothing.
Yeah.
Call roll.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
No.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
I'm voting no, because I want to hear the public comment now.
And Mayor Dan Holliday?
Aye. So the motion doesn't carry. Uh, so I'm going to recommend that the city manager bring this back to the next meeting. We'll have full commission, and we'll have five people, and then we can make a final decision.
Okay, and understood. And what I also wanted to clarify was, we've done the survey work, the easement work, we've written the ordinance, so my, you know, and at the last meeting when we were discussing this, we were, it was a Wednesday meeting, Friday was going to be the last day for the general public to buy, make an offer to purchase the property. We had already done the advertisement and RFP process for the demolition. So my intent is to start that process up, but also bring the ordinance designating the Charter Park at the next meeting. We were ready to bring it, but we needed to get through this item, since this was kind of brought up, and we needed some direction on how to move forward, but...
Well, I don't think we're ready for that until we make this...
No, we are ready for it, yes.
Well, I think, it feels like everything's coming together.
I disagree with you.
I, I, I guess what I, what I'm worried about is that if I, you know, one of the, one of the objectives of the commission was to get this done in this calendar year. So I've got November 4th, November 18th, and then the ordinance would go into effect 30 days later, unless we did an emergency reading. You know, so then, you know, if we go November 18th, we're at the December 1, that's into January. But I'm trying to run these concurrently, which was the direction of the commission. So I'm just, I'm feeling like bringing everything, but starting that process. We've got to get people, you know, if we're going to demolish the buildings, we've got to start moving in that direction with that contract in order for them to mobilize. So that, that's my intention. And now how the commission decides to vote, we will, we will deal with that on the 4th.
Okay.
Am I being allowed to speak or not?
No.
I would like to register my, my rights are being violated, and I will, I will dedicate my rights.
So anybody have any objection to the consent agenda?
I'd like to move, we adopt the consent agenda.
First ticket?
Is there no response to the citizen's comment?
I thought he was making a statement, not a question.
Yeah, he's making a statement.
If, if you'd like a response, I would say Fasano versus Washington, Board of County Commissioners of Washington County, is an early on 19, early 70s case, which essentially said that in the land use process, participants had a certain due process rights. As I stated at the beginning, I don't think we're in a land use process. This is a city acting in its proprietary capacity as owner of land and deciding whether or not to remove the refusal to consent.
We're not going to have an argument with you here, Mr. Nacita. There's a motion on the floor, is there a second for the consent agenda?
Aye.
Okay, move to second, call roll, please.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Mayor Dan Holliday?
Aye.
Uh, oh, were we going to ramp that other thing, Tony, Mr. Conkle? From the executive session?
Yeah, the executive session.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. So I think we were going to turn the meeting over to Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
For this next item, as the most senior member of the commission remaining.
Want to get going?
Sure, and so the, the commission requested that after the executive session that we have an opportunity for the commissioners to talk about the investigation of Mayor Holliday. That was requested and completed on behalf of the city commissioners. And so this is the opportunity for the commissioners to make statements related to that investigation and the report. And I'll just go ahead and summarize that I've been authorized at the conclusion of this meeting to release the, the, the report and, and its appendixes that have been provided.
Yes, I'll just say it says, somewhat unusual, usually the mayor heads the meeting, but he has agreed that in open meetings on this subject, it falls to either the commission president or the senior member present to chair the meeting, and I'm going to do so. The subject, as Mr. Conkle began to summarize, is the, the release of the investigative report and the mayor's actions, which led to censure and a vote of no confidence and a request for the investigation. And the question before us was, shall we release, as Ms. Mumm stated, it's been weeks, actually it's been months, so... It's unusual for us to interrupt a regular meeting and reconvene, but we did so because of the importance of the matter. The investigation request was initially made in an open meeting, and at the same time, those other measures of censure were imposed. And subsequent reviews were conducted in closed meetings and executive sessions. And, and subsequent to that, sufficient signatures were gathered for a recall. And quite honestly, the investigation has dragged on for longer than I've seen investigations drag on in the solution of major crimes. the solution of major crimes. So the question to be answered tonight by this Commission is regardless of this Commission's opinion of the quality or completeness or conclusion is drawn in the investigator's report, should the report be immediately released? And so in what form, to which persons or agencies shall the report be forwarded? And I, I think I just pose, I'll just pose a question at that point, and let my fellow Commissioners speak, and then I'll speak individually on my thoughts of it. I think it would be best to do it like that. So I would open it up to the Commissioners and the mayor, and who wants to speak first?
Um, I think it's important that the public sees the, the report, and that's why I support releasing it, I support releasing it with no redactions. However, I don't believe the report is complete. I believe that the investigator did not answer specific questions that we asked of her, and I feel like, you know, we need to release the, the report the way it is at this point due to timing, but I don't believe it's complete.
Does another Commissioner wish to speak? If so, I can go if you do not want to speak. I will speak then. I, I also feel there's a trade-off, individual rights and the rights of our, our community to view the report in its entirety and come to their own conclusions. I expect that the media will publish it, and we will publish it, I guess, I believe our, on our own website or in some form?
Yes.
To make it available to those voters, because we believe educated voters make the best decisions. We know that the recall election occurs on November 10th, and that time is of the essence. And yes, I feel that the report is deficient, and I feel so for a number of reasons, and I'll enumerate them, and, but that's just my personal feeling, and others can make their own choices. I know that she, we asked initially that the report be released to everyone and anyone who, who requested it, and we would forward it to them, including state agencies. We talked about, were we simply dealing with rude behavior or ethical violations, or up to and including violations of our state law, commonly referred to as ORS or Oregon Vice statutes. The investigator was asked to investigate specific findings, and her task was do findings of fact, but there's an argument as to whether she should determine findings of law. My opinion was that I think that any investigator determines findings of fact, and that findings of law are, are determined by other venues, whether it be the district attorney, the attorney general, or whomever. And I felt that the report was deficient. It did touch upon one of the ORSs, which is 162.415, which was official misconduct, but it didn't touch on others, such as ORS 244040, which is prohibited use of an official position, or ORS 163195, which is recklessly endangering. There's also another statute which dealt with the attempt to, to make something happen, to commit the elements of these offenses. So I think it's important for the community to know that this is not a one-issue recall, and it's multiple-issue recalls. And the, I don't need to summarize the report, and we're not going to, we're not going to argue the contents of the report here tonight, I hope. Simply going to put it out before you, you read it, it'll deal with elements like the allegations about the fireworks request and, and violation of the governor's orders. And yes, there was a statement made on black lives, but that is not the only reason that this is being done. And some of the things have been determined. The investigator was quite competent in reviewing what's called Roberts Rules of Order, but we felt it's incomplete. But regardless of that, weighing that against the importance of the voters to have access to this, and in fairness to even the mayor, it should be released, and that's why I'll vote for the release. Do I have a comment from any other Commissioner or the mayor?
You can go ahead, I've got a couple...
I'm not, you take your time.
At this point in time, I want to say that I agree with Commissioner Smith and Commissioner O'Donnell. I agree that the report should be released and should not be redacted. I also feel that the report is not complete for the very reasons that Commissioner O'Donnell stated. I want to know, want the, the community to know for the record that I stand by my signature on the letter of July 1st, and that the four of us agreed for our reasons for taking our I feel that based on the information that we've been given, like I'm standing in the Sahara Desert and the sands of truth are shifting around. Actions speak to intent, regardless of whether they were carried out or not. I feel that the integrity of this city has been compromised and harmed, and we have to do everything we can to restore our reputation. I wanted to be clear that our actions tonight leave no doubt about where we stand with this matter.
Okay, does that conclude your statement?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Mayor, you wish to speak?
Am I going to be the last one?
I believe everyone else has spoken, have they not?
Maybe.
No, I don't have anything to say. The reports, I think, speaks for itself, that the Commission continues to try to find something to hang their hat on, on this recall is disappointing. The fact is, is that the investigator took over two and a half months. She is a lawyer, you guys hired her, she conducted many interviews, talked to many people, then went back and re-invested people, and the fact is, is that, as you will see in the report, other than maybe a violation of some arcane section of Roberts Rules of Order, that I did not do anything that violated state law, I didn't do anything that violated City Commission procedure policies, or anything that was an ethical violation. So it's pretty clear to me that, you know, the public definitely needs to see this, because, you know, there've been a lot of lies and rumors flying around out there about what I allegedly did or didn't do, and the reason I was so anxious to say yes, let's have an investigation, was because I knew I hadn't done anything wrong. So that's the end of my statement.
Okay, and I think we're, we're releasing it simply because we believe in what's called the reasonable man theory of law, and let each of you voters review it, make your own decision, and vote accordingly.
And I would make the motion to release the report unredacted.
Seconded. All for the vote.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
And Mayor Dan Holliday?
Aye.
Does the mayor not typically make motions?
I wasn't chairing the meeting.
Thank you, you're right.
Yes, he wasn't chairing the meeting, he's allowed to make motions, according to Roberts Rules of Order.
Okay, so in light of the executive session we have coming up after this meeting, if we have communications, can we keep them fairly brief?
I have none further.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner McGriff?
I'm deferring till next month.
Okay, then with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.